The thing is for us, we attempted to run this without an election, you know, sell the certificate of obligations without an election because of the interest rate that if it goes up, our financial advisor advised us, if it goes up a cent, it could cost a million dollars about back going up. But we, in talking to him since then, he said it's a good probability that it's not going to go up a cent because of the mess the American economy is in right now, that, you know, it had been reported that it was going up, but now that it's not, it's not as good a case as we'd like to see it in. So, good probability it won't go up that cent, hopefully it won't, you know, but that would be a major cost to us if it does. And that's another thing, interest is at all time low. Anything else? Any other comments, questions? We're back on one, two, three, the public can comment on the annex, item six, under item seven, any public hearing, courthouse annex one, two, three, update, comment, question. If anyone has any comment, question, feel free to bring it up. Moving on. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Is there a website?
It's a Wilson County website.
Oh, I didn't tell you. These are particular.
Is that?
I'll show you. Just write it down.
I'll show you. Okay, moving on. Thank you very much, appreciate your presentation. Moving on to item 11, Vernon Brazil, County Auditor, who reviews, discuss, approve, possible applications for the Texas Department of Commerce or fund grants and presentation by our committee.
That was, that was a...
Oh, I just said, okay, okay, well, we didn't want to leave it off, Judge.
That's fine, yeah, I think they called, I said, let's move on. Item B, discuss and approve, one, budget amendments for 2013, 2014 budget.
I think y'all should all have a little handout. We kind of talked about this in prior reading, but since we approved, since y'all approved the budget on August 26th, there's been some changes that have come up, mainly due to things being a little late. So, I've kind of listed everything out for y'all as far as what we're going to have to amend on our new budget, since it was already approved, we have to do amendment process. The items are, of course, we have an increase in retirement for everyone because y'all did pass a 2% COA for retirees, we did that back in September, I think it was September 9th or 16th, I'm not sure which date. So, that's going to increase the retirement by about a thousand dollars for all departments. The other item is on district and county courts, the district attorney increased his budget in September by about, I have 24, 273, to be real specific, about $25,000. He increased his budget for some salary increases in his office.
And that's probably down to our county, the other county says...
This is, yes, this is our portion.
And like the, the three, Horns, Nassau, and Freo County will be much less, Ascoosa will be similar?
Ascoosa and Wasner are very similar.
Carry the front of it.
So, his increase was probably about $7,000, $60 something. The other item is juvenile probation, we paid Horns County for juvenile services, and that has increased this year by about $4,300. I had last year's amount in there, and that's gone up a little bit, so we have an increase there. Another item is Eva had the option, oop, I've got some spelling errors in there, I'm sorry, I was typing really fast this morning. Eva had the option of taking the two part-time employees that were not covered by insurance and turning them into one full-time employee, and she's done that, so now we have an additional employee in there that we need to cover for health insurance. So, because our part-timers were, were a little more than a full-time employee, there's not, the whole amount there is just about $3,000. The public defender, the capital case agreement, that is something that's on the agenda that y'all are going to address later, but the amount on their increases every year, and that increase wasn't taken into account on the current budget, would be going from, last year it was $800, this year it'll be $14,700, so there's about approximately a $5,000 increase there. I had an error in the auditor's office, but there's no overall budget change in that, I'm just going to redo something there. Courthouse security, that is just a correction, there's not going to be any budget change. We had the wrong employee in the courthouse security slot, we should have had someone else, so there's, there's a change there, we're going to increase courthouse security and decrease the sheriff's office for that. Sorry.
The reason I did that is just because it switched one personnel from the sheriff's department to there.
Right.
It's not a, it's not a...
It's, it's not really an addition or deletion, it's just a correction of the classification of the...
One personnel was making more than the other one, that's why.
Right. And then, the EMA, I talked to Leanne, we had talked about those sign materials for the commissioners, we had some funds that signed in EMA for sign material, but we discussed it a little bit, and the commissioners are now covering their own signs, so I grabbed that money to help offset some of this other increase, so a $5,000 decrease there. And then, the county extension office, somehow, my error, I'm guessing, is the, the increase there is due to, there's a vehicle allowance for one of the extension personnel that does not have a county vehicle, and then they get reimbursed for phone usage, and I didn't include that, I apologize for that, just didn't get in there. So, there's, there's an increase of about $7,800 in the extension office. From looking at everything, I'm thinking I can offset 100% of this by the health insurance. When we originally did the budget plan, we went ahead and increased the insurance by about 19%, based on information that the department group is giving us all the time, saying that insurance would probably increase by about 19%. So, we went ahead and increased our monthly amounts for health insurance by that, we took it from 200 and, I'm sorry, about $730 a month per employee to about $866 a month per employee. The thing was, when I did that, I did it for the entire year, but going back and looking at it, we have October, November, and December that we're still at the lower rate, so based on that lower rate, we'll be able to offset these budget increases in the other departments. And I'm hoping from the wonderful turnout on the health insurance...
I wouldn't, I wouldn't get too excited about that one turnout.
Kind of seen it, I've seen it.
There is a lot, lots of things in there that's not necessarily health insurance.
Well, that's true, that's true.
The, the one thing from a budget standpoint, when we met with IPS recently, one of the things we talked to them about was the fact that it was really difficult when we got all of our proposals in October, and we had to put our budget, and they indicated to us, if my memory is correct, Jen, that next year that that wouldn't be the case, that they'd be able to pull that all together for us, so that we'd have those numbers before the budget was put together. So, we did address that.
So, those are the changes, and in order to put these into our current year's budget outstanding, Johnson's...
Okay. Commissioner Wylie, Detective Commissioner Morales, all there. Okay, item two, HTS, point, assistance service agreement, November 1, 2013, October 31st, 2014.
Y'all should also have a copy of the HTS agreement. Mr. Holtham and I have been talking with HTS for a couple of months now. We do have an IT department now, it is a one-person IT department, and we realized that we will probably still need assistance from HTS, so we were trying to work something out with them so that we could use them on an as-needed basis, so that they can assist us in, in the case that we run into something that, you know, our IT department can't handle, or if he is not available for some reason. The other thing that HTS does is they also do our backups for us right now, they're, they're doing our countywide backup for us, I think we have 500 gigs that they're backing up for us on a monthly, they're actually backing them up every night, so that we have security as far as our systems go, which I think is really important to keep in place. They're also looking at, at monitoring our servers, all our sonic walls, all our, you know, protection, internet protection as far as our bio, those type of things. That's what we're working into this contract that they will continue to do, and then on a as-needed basis, they would continue to assist us if something broke and John could not repair it or wasn't available, they would bill us on their hourly rates, they've given us the, which is the same rates we've always had, $69 for regular office hours and $89 for after-hours nights, those type of things. We're discussing with them, and this is what we have come up with as of Friday afternoon, this is where we were, they're looking at providing us all those services that I just talked about, and then on as-needed basis for an additional fee, the other items, and we're looking at about $29,000 for this contract.
As opposed to what we've been paying?
We had in the past, I believe their contract last year was in the 70 range, and then they, of course, charged us for, you know, every time we bought something, if it wasn't included or whatever. I think overall, even adding an IT department and maintaining this contract, we will still probably be several thousand dollars under what we paid last year.
And we discussed the need for a policy as far as a calling of HTS?
Yes, and John is working on that, he wanted to go ahead and put that together, he's going to be looking at sending out a policy to all the departments as far as who, you know, contacting H3S through him, okay? And then he had some other items that he wanted to discuss as far as, like, where you can position your computers and things like that, and he's probably working on that.
Yeah, I would think most of it, we'd want to go through him, because we have to know the questions in short of time.
Well, and, and also the fact that it may be something that he can do without calling HTS.
They don't want to call him. They benefit him for his knowledge of what we need for...
Now, there are going to be situations where, I mean, if he's going to be out of town and something breaks down, and you may have to do that if it's, if it's an emergency, or if you can talk to him and say, "Well, can you wait until this afternoon when I get back?" And he'll be fine. But, you know, we are going to correlate everything through the IT department now, so that we don't give random calls to HTS, and that's one of the things that is specified in this contract, that they will, you know, coordinate everything through the IT department. Not necessarily, we don't need to have a vote on it, it, it's pretty much complete, we're still kind of going through it, and John had a few questions, so if, if y'all want to wait until the 28th or the week, whatever the next meeting is, that's fine. If y'all want to go ahead and approve it...
It's what, you've been involved, what do you think would do it, approve it to be...
Well, I think that, you know, it's not going up, okay? There's no way it's going to go up, it may come down.
But why don't we wait then, if it may come down?
Well, it may come down, but, you know, if y'all want to approve it as is with any changes possible to it, I, I don't know how y'all want to do it.
Won't have any effect on what this goes up or what we approve it, okay?
I just want to comment, the IT person, we already very thankful we got him, so we ought to take the time, go over to his office, he's got computers, his part, and working on them, you know, and we need to be out, and, and, well, who would, who would be the person, I'd say if he's on vacation or gone, that...
Well, see, that's, that's part of this contract, because...
That's part of it.
Get him up that, you should take him.
You know, the department has to make contact if he's gone or, or needs some help, you know?
Probably go through the auditor's office, and we would probably then contact HTS, and that's one of the reasons why we want to keep a relationship with HTS, because as it is, it is a one-man department, and if John gets the flu, everything's forbidden.
And that's probably some things that he doesn't have the equipment to, to deal with, you know, so that's...
Exactly. And there are some larger things that we're looking at, that, you know, we will need HTS's assistance.
But that's already considered, that's number 29, Shepherd.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Okay. Item three, designate funds remaining in a high-end prison jail bond for the jail maintenance.
There's some, some funds left over, we, Jen paid off the jail bond, and there are some funds remaining in that fund, last time I looked, it was like $20,000, there's not a lot of money in there, but because people are still paying, you have to taxes and things like that, there's always going to be a little bit of money floating in there. I talked to several other auditors, I went and I looked at the local government code to find out what would be appropriate, and I also discussed it with our outside auditor, and he suggested, and based on all the other information, we kind of agreed that it would probably be a wise thing to use those funds and designate them specifically for jail maintenance, because it is the jail bond, and therefore we can use those funds for jail maintenance. I, I know he's got some air conditioners that are going to need to be replaced. Other than that, we would have to, it says in the law, that if it's a reasonable thing, that we can return it to the taxpayers. Well, I'm not sure, I'm a big old computer program, I'd have to decide to, to figure out how much to return.
Probably cost more than $20,000 to get it done.
Yeah, to return $20,000, so...
You gonna vote on this?
Yes.
Okay, so they've filed, that's, that's Wiley all there. All right. Fifty cents a piece.
Yeah.
Item four, purchase a zip, asphalt zipper, refailer, precinct number four, Wiley using funds from his fund, value, material.
That's Mr. Wiley, is your question, Dario.
Motion, Commissioner Wiley, Detective Commissioner Morales, all there. As long as he shares the machine at times.
You're...
I'm going to take that much for a zipper, but...
I've never had an asphalt zipper before.
Item 13, boys and girls, club, Wilson County, Harvest Fall Festival will be held again as a safe alternative to Halloween. VDCU would like permission to use the courthouse lawn on October 31st, 2013, from 12 noon until 10:00 PM that evening.
That's me, Judge. I'm speaking in behalf of Debbie Ball, that cannot be heard today, and she would like to use it again. They don't have any, they don't have any kind of barbecue in there, anything like that, so that would be a possibility, and she would like to use it, Judge.
Are they going, are they going to need a wrath to conjure up some spirits or something?
[laughing]
I mean, you could do it.
Okay. Commissioner Morales and Commissioner Wiley, all there. All right. Item 14, discuss take action 2014 in a local agreement, regional public defender for capital cases. Would that be Ms. Vernon, Ms. Dana, has anything on that?
Well, I have a copy of it, but I didn't...
It's something we entered into a few years ago, and it didn't cost anything that I caused, but it is...
What did you get out of it? What did, what did...
It's, if you have a capital murder case, they represent it, and a capital murder case can be about right about your individual...
John emailed it out to, to everybody.
The item that I had on there was $9,800 last year, and this year it went up to $14,700, and then next year it goes up to $15,000.
$9,686.
They, they came in and did it first year for you, but, but it really and truly, I mean, I, I know this is not even worth, I mean, a capital murder case, not even worth on that, like that Hassan case, they've talked about millions already for, they've spent on that case a lot.
Well, and, and, I mean, I think, just to jump in on this, as far as experts and any other expense, that would still be on the county, but this covers is the attorney's expenses for representation, and anything over the attorney's expense, expert witnesses, travel, things like that, that would still be billed to the county for that one case.
So, at, at some point, if this keeps going up, anyone might want to sit down with the attorneys and, and look at it again, because attorneys be is one thing, but the expertise can go range from anywhere to whatever, I'm sure, I've seen that one come upon the desk from this court already.
I wonder if they haven't had a capital murder case...
I think...
How did they come up with the dollar and I see, we're half the cost of less, more than that one out of COVID, I mean, how do they...
We're half one last...
COVID was 47.
Well, and in the agreement...
They have had, I mean, they, they had so many, that should have dumped it.
They get a percentage of your capital murder cases to your total criminal cases to your population, so they've kind of extrapolated, and it set out in the agreement, kind of the formula that they were using, is partially based on the population of the county with the number of criminal cases, and like, ours is like 1% of all of our criminal cases is actually a criminal case.
Just curious, how do you know?
Yep, and then part of it to, in the agreement asked if they could be kept as one of the current fees that are being paid to appointed attorneys, that's, that kind of all rolls into that.
Motion, Commissioner Wiley, all there. All right. Item 15, discuss take action on legislation authorized in county grant to community council of South Texas, Central Texas Incorporated for home delivery jail grant program. You got anything on that?
Uh, yes, I got a copy of it, because no one sent it out as well. It's, it's that Texas Department of Agriculture's Home Delivery, New and Grant Program, and its budget is at $2,100.
That's what it was last year.
That's what it was last year.
Motion, Commissioner, Morales, Commissioner Wiley, all there. Item 16, discuss take action on bids that failed to sell at the tax board votes itself. Item A is cause number 08-06-0366-CVW, two acres, Vicente, Sepeda, Survey, Dejada Lane. Item B is cause number 08-03-0226-CVW, 2.2 acres, Vicente, Sepeda, Survey, Dejada Lane, and...
This is that presentation, Judge, from the office.
Anyone have any questions or comment on those two properties?
Judge, I'd like to comment on Commissioner Gomis' comment, and he's familiar with this property, and he recommended we do not accept the gift, he thinks we bring any money, where's that? So, I just, mostly we don't accept the gifts.
Motion, second, Commissioner Wiley, all in favor? Yes. Item 17, Paul Vile, Commissioner in Precinct Two, discuss take action regarding Christmas lights on courthouse square.
Judge, this is, I've had quite a few people come and ask me about, we can somehow get lighting back up at the courthouse or somewhere on courthouse square, and, and so I had, me and the county attorney, Ms. Vernon, we were looking at it, and what happened in the past, I wasn't aware of it, FDPC, they spent the money before, and it's like $15,000, but the city has all the lights in storage that they would give us, and I'm just suggesting that, or bringing this up, seeing if we can get maybe the light company or somebody with a bucket truck and...
Well, in the past, they've approached us as far as sharing in the expense, and I've told them, I don't think we can justify that expense.
No, I mean, you...
Whatever, we have roads in control. However, if it's a matter of labor and people that got them there, I, I have no objection to, to whatever, but I, what I'm saying is, I want it to be known that the county's not...
Hold on, that's why I wanted to find out what the whole idea was, and I think, you know, we can either get the commission in a bucket truck or Commissioner Morales or...
Maybe, maybe a combination with the, the light company, you know, it'd be a pretty good thing.
What I'm looking at doing, trying to see if we can do it, nothing else on the fence or trees or the tax office, maybe the jail.
Even, even...
Still up, still up.
A little star.
Just plug them in. But I think it's kind of pretty expensive, you know, when I found out $15,000 just to hang lights, you know, I think we can kind of somehow, and I just kind of want to get the court's opinion or ideas, what they'd like to do.
Well, I think it'd be great if you can do it in a, you know, in a cooperative effort without spending any kind of, you know, significant money, you know, it's a good, brings the community together, it's a good thing, but like I said, we all, we all in agreement with you on spending.
No, but they have the lights, all we have to do is...
I told them, I guess, they're not reading yet.
So, you're going to look further into it?
Yes.
And see if we can't get the light company or somebody with a bucket truck to operate the bucket truck.
You want to, you want to formally get your approval to look into it? Motion, Commissioner Wiley, Commissioner Morales, all in favor? Or, Commissioner Morales, look into it.
I think the tallest person over there, Judge, on the...
Have that fence can be decorated, huh?
That's what, that's what we're looking at right now, I mean...
Item 18, did he discuss whether he wants to take that up or not?
Yes.
And go ahead and take that up?
Yeah, go ahead.
Alver Gomis, Commissioner Precinct One, to consider and take action on granting the abandonment, abandonment easement between lots 13 and 15 in the Calabria subdivision to Mark Cadenah.
Apparently this Mark Cadenah home property on both sides of this easement, and we would all know it.
Is he going to take the legal bill on the...
I think it's already abandoned, already closed, nobody allowed to do something, see, I don't know, legal work to...
Yeah, in the past, we've had an attorney come to represent whoever it was.
We can pass it, that, that, like, some of they put the legal bill to, to...
It's no cost to the county, no cost.
No, the motion is approved. Both of them, you're about it now.
That sounds fine to me, Judge, he's...
Then you want to do it?
No, no, that's fine, all right, I, right now, being the only attorney in office, and this is how I spend my Cadenah festival weekend.
Well, we're looking at it, we, we agree, so, uh, motion with the, with those legal bills to, to make a legal, motion, Commissioner Vile, Commissioner Morales, all in favor? All right.
Item 18, the Anho Shack EMC, A, blood plane development, septic driveway permit fees.
The ESD number one's going to be submitting their permit application in the future near future, we are putting a, a, a substation, and they are asking about waiving the fees for that, and we have some subsequent items on the agenda after that, so...
I wouldn't be opposed to waiving a bid, operating on county funds.
In reading, on item A, one, two, and three, all of them to be taken together?
Well, those two consistent with a degree.
Okay, what I was going to ask y'all then, on items two and three, is if, if you vote to waive the fees for ESD number one, do y'all want to take action and do a court order that would waive the fees for certain entities, so we don't have to come to Commissioner's Court every time and get approval? And then if you do, then tell me which entities?
Well...
Nonprofits, political subdivisions, what if they're...
I think maybe political subdivision, nonprofit could cover a lot of things.
Yeah, sure, could, yeah, the first thing comes to me, if they're funded by county funds, then it doesn't seem right to charge...
Powell School District did, I mean, they, they have their own tax entity, but they're a public entity that's taxpayer-funded.
Well, the ESD's a, I mean, they're a tax entity as well, so...
I think you'll, just do it, hold on, who gave it a comment?
So, if they want the fees to be waived, they have to come in, public Commissioner's Court and request, okay?
Let's begin, can I have...
I've checked with, I've checked with, Waterloo, Comal, Atascosa, Kendall, none of them waive fees, Comal County did, they'll waive fees on, on county projects, if it's a county project, they don't have a standing order to waive fees, Helping Heroes, Bills...
Helping Heroes builds homes in a particular subdivision and they'll come to commissioner's court and request to get the fees waived, but other than that, none of the other jurisdictions waive.
There's one fee on the septics that is, that we do not, I mean, it's built into it, it's ten dollar fee that the state charges the county per septic. And that's a fee that we can't waive that, and it causes Jan all kinds of problems if we waive that and it's, that by now, money gonna come from.
I mean, I have no problem with number one, but the other two, I think we need to come on.
Just tell them if they would have to come to commissioner's court, okay, that's fine.
Okay, and number one, what it were is the fee that the county, not, that not including any state mandated fees. Is that correct?
If you got a septic, well, then, yeah.
And it's in, I believe where they're putting up their structure is off of a tech stock driveway.
Yes.
Right, so you would be able to waive the driveway permit fees on that due to the situation, so you would be coming to the county on that, so.
You want to take a motion, number one?
On number one, to waive the development fee and the county fees for septic.
Motion, Commissioner Wiley, Commissioner Morales, all the way. All right. And.
And then no action.
No action on two and three.
Okay, you said. The county portion of septic. And then no action on two and three, they will have to go to commissioner's court on their own and request fees for that.
Okay, item B, is this all good information?
Uh, one, two, and three are actually, number four is a pipeline crossing.
Okay. On item, one, two, and three, item one was E O G precinct two, County Road two fifteen, County Road two sixteen, this is temporary ward and lines for it. Item two is E O G precinct two, County Road two fifteen, County Road two sixteen. And item three is quick pipe precinct two, County Road one thirty two. Item four is hunt oil precinct two, Hertzoff three H, and that's a permit.
That is a pipeline crossing.
Cross line and motion commissioner file, second commissioner Wiley all the way. All right. Item C, utility permit, all of them is, one on precinct one, permit number four seventy seven for coastal water supply precinct one fifty seven twenty eight, County Road one one seven, then you talk with the commissioner Gomez with that.
Uh, he hasn't signed off on it yet.
Do we?
But he would have been provided a copy of it.
We will accept a motion pending his approval, motion commissioner file, second Commissioner Morales, all the way. And item two and three on there, permit four seventy eight, four seventy nine, some friendly water supply, all in precinct three, one on A Street, one on County Road precinct one, motion, Commissioner Morales, second, Mr. File, all the way. Item D, nonstandard flat variance request, item one eight fifty two, County Road two fifty five, file review and approve.
Okay, this is. Okay, this came before the development review committee on the third was given a favorable recommendation. They weren't able to claim the family exemption, so that's why they had to request a variance.
And got that approval.
And all the requirements.
Motion, Commissioner File, Mr. Wiley, all the way. All right. Item two is five hundred Lawless Lane, Lawless review approved. That'd be.
And that came before the development review committee on the same day was given a favorable recommendation. They were requesting a variance from having to meet the road permit requirement. The family property is developed off of an old grandfather basement, which when the nine one one addressing was done, it was established as Lawless Lane.
Motion, Commissioner File, Commissioner Wiley, all the way. All right. Item three, one seventeen, big oak lane, waiting to be approved.
Okay, this one came to the development review committee at the same meeting, was given a favorable recommendation. This is a property owner selling a fifty foot strip to an adjoining landowner.
And he did get that. Motion, Commissioner White, Commissioner Morales, all the way. All right. Item B, Con Springs R V Park, review and approve, the last I D P.
Okay, this is the R V park that the county, the county had approved their I D P like in the fall of last year and they've been working with the city trying to get started on the development, they have issues, they finally come to an agreement and so they are asking for the county's to, to amend the R V park infrastructure development plan, which reduces the county's land use jurisdiction from the full seventeen point three five acres that it originally had raised over to eleven point three five acres and the six acres would be regulated by the city, of course.
If the county would do the inspection, get the community on the portion of the county that's not assessed a victim for R V park, E P J is qualified.
And that was reviewed by the committee.
And it was given a favorable recommendation.
Okay, Commissioner File, Commissioner Wiley, all the way.
I think he's gonna start with the county park first from what he's saying.
Oh, okay.
Have twenty minutes.
I passed it off.
Everybody had an optee? Motion, Commissioner Wiley, second, Commissioner Morales, all the way. All right. Financial report.
Thank you, Mel.
This was for August and September. I'm sorry. We have some submission.
Anything, need to point out or?
Uh, just wanted to let you know that we are down to, we've already taken out five point seven million in the last few months out of tax pool and I probably will have to take out some more before the money starts coming in for, from the taxes. Yes, so you'll have August and September.
I had the original.
So, we should be able to build it back up?
Yes, when the taxes start going in, okay.
We hope.
We hope.
Okay. Commissioner Morales, second, Commissioner Wiley, all the way. All right.
On, item twenty two, paper on per note.
Okay, we have Jose Vasquez Junior was terminated nine nineteen from Department four twenty as a correction officer. Cynthia Hanahoso was hired nine twenty three, two thousand and thirteen, Department two twenty, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, she's gonna be the county clerk's, county clerk clerk. Cardy Kitchens was terminated nine thirty, Department three forty, Assistant County Attorney. John Menos was hired nine thirty, two thousand and thirteen, Department five oh one, two thousand five hundred dollars a month as a deputy. Greg Alista, these are just, he dropped from full time to part time on ten one, two thousand and thirteen. Melanie Mucha Gambo went part time to full time, Department three sixteen, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. Rebecca Upchurch went full time, ten one, two thousand and thirteen, Department seven hundred, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. And Cynthia Strafford, she went part time to full time, ten one, two thousand and thirteen, Department five thirty, and failed to put a, I think it's two thousand six hundred something there. Michelle Weir was hired, ten one, two thousand and thirteen, Department four eighty, one thousand three hundred and sixty one dollars and ninety one cents a month, R C S extension agent. Charles Pipelotik the third was hired, ten one, two thousand and thirteen, Department four twenty, twenty five, two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars a month as a correction Jared Britt was hired, ten eight, two thousand and thirteen, Department four twenty, two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars a month as a correction officer. And Brittany Porter resigned, ten eleven, two thousand and thirteen, Department five thirty as E M A clerk.
Any question, comments? Motion, Mr. File, Mr. Wiley, all the way. All right. Item twenty three, deals. Everyone had an optee to deal the deals? Motion, Commissioner, five, Commissioner Morales, all the way. All right. And we adjourned.